And it comes with Executive Order N 29-20. The Humboldt County Board of Supervisors meetings are being held virtually. You can participate via the Zoom call and phone number, which is located on the bottom of the screen and on the front of the agenda. And with that, Ryan Lee, please do a roll call.
Thank you, Chair. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes, and Ryan, Supervisor Madron just got to his office.
Thank you. Supervisor Bass?
Here.
Supervisor Bone?
Nine o'clock, I'm here.
Supervisor Wilson is absent, I believe.
Yes, he had a commitment he was not able to switch.
And as soon as I see Supervisor Madron log on, I will count him as in attendance as well.
All right, well, with that, we will move forward, assuming he is, since he's in the office, he will be on. So with that, Ryan, do you have the flag? All right, then, everyone, please join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So just to give a little heads up on how these meetings run, if you haven't been on here before, for those of you who would like to call in and make comment, please raise your hand by pressing star nine at the beginning of the item you're interested in speaking on. And then when your number is called, press star six to unmute yourself. I'm strict on the three-minute time limit because I think everyone should have the same amount of time to talk to the board. And so when you have 30 seconds left, you will hear this sound, which means you have 30 seconds to wrap up. And at three minutes, you will be thanked for your comments, and then it is time to move on to someone else. Like I said, don't take it personally, it's the same for everyone. So I would like to go to our CAO, Nelson. We do have a 9:00 AM, but I would like to try to see if we can get the consent calendar taken care of. So do we have modifications to the agenda, CAO?
Morning, Chair Bass. Yes, we have two modifications to the agenda. Item C9 and item M3 will be pulled from the calendar and brought back at a later date.
All right. Yes, Supervisor Brown?
If Connie, and I'm not sure, I had a phone call from somebody just a little bit ago about C14, and I know that's last minute, but if somebody could give up explanation, they were concerned about losing those positions and...
So then maybe we should pull that, Amy, to have that brief conversation later after the other, when we get after the done with the time set? What would you prefer?
I would recommend that you pull item C14 for discussion.
I appreciate that. Sorry for it, I just got the phone call. I apologize.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar minus items C9 and C14 and to accept the modification that M3 will be coming back at a later date?
I make the motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Our numbers are little.
I'm glad you were able to step up there. Wonderful. So let us see if we have anyone who would like to make public comment on this. I do not see any hands raised, so we will go back to the board. And at this time, are there any comments on the consent calendar the board members would like to make, or are you ready to vote? Ready to vote? Does that make sense of it? Okay. All right, Ryan Lee, please do a roll call.
Yes, Chair. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
I still don't see Supervisor Madron on here. Supervisor Madron?
I mean, I'll walk down, Ryan.
He may be having technical difficulties getting on like I did this morning.
And I know Supervisor Wilson is absent.
Okay. We'll get this. And then I will also take the public comment on non-agenda items before moving to the time set. Sorry, Cody, I hope that's okay. Supervisor Bushnell?
Kathy's going to try to help him get on, log on.
Okay, so I, we can't assume what he votes, so...
Yeah, I mean, I'm briefly looking at, I mean, like, with my brief oversight, I don't necessarily see any forfeits on here, but don't hold me to it because...
I asked about that earlier, and I did not see one either.
Okay. So it will be, the vote will be 3-0 with Supervisor Wilson and Madron.
Oh wait, there is. Did you want to vote? Okay, he's okay. Supervisor Madron's good on that item.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron. So the vote is 4-0. Supervisor Wilson, absent.
All right, thank you. So now we will move on to the public comment portion of our agenda, and this is the time to comment on items that are not on the agenda. And you'll have three minutes, and there will be no conversation from the board or action taken on those items. So I have a couple attendees with their hands up. The first speaker is 0151, followed by user dash one. I'm not sure who this is, but 0151, welcome. You are the first person to public comment.
Good morning. This is Dottie Russell from Southern Humboldt. And there are a number of issues that are going on about people that have housing insecurity. So they're living without a permanent place to live, and we're trying to figure out how to address this issue. So some people, including myself, have a case open for code enforcement because there's somebody living in a travel trailer or an RV, which some other neighbors have. So what I'd like to do is propose to the county that we have a three-week interactive with the Board of Supervisors and find out where these people are going to go. It's really not our responsibility to get in trouble with the county, to take care of what the county's job is, to figure out what to do with their residents. So if you could please make an appointment to talk to me, I can get a group of people together that are very interested from a religious and humanistic standpoint of what to do with people and how to help these people. Because obviously, we know of the trauma of the Christian Science Church because of a homeless person, and that needs to not keep happening. And so, you know, we come to these meetings and we have public comment, which is really great, and you listen to it, and we appreciate that, but oftentimes, there's not follow-up. So it would be really nice if we could assign somebody, when somebody has an issue like this, this is, this is an issue of life and death. This is an issue of people's property rights, this is an issue of the county's residents, and we can't do it by ourselves. I mean, there are people that are in multiple faiths that want to do something to help, but we really don't know how to help. And we're trying all these different creative approaches, but we can't do it without your help. So we need your help. And also, it's really important to address the expectations of living in Northern Humboldt and Southern Humboldt should and have to be considered different because they are different. It's a different climate, it's a different environment, it's a different economic structure that was established 60 years ago. So I've only been here 20 years, but this is a mess, and I don't want to be stuck in the middle of it, getting in trouble with every, every faction of people living. I get in trouble with people if I don't have them, I get in people, in trouble with people if I do have them, and even the people that work for the county have different opinions of what to do. So I just heard a beep, I don't know if that's the 30-second beep or if that's the final...
Yes, 30 seconds, you have 30 seconds left.
Thank you. So thanks for the beep, I appreciate that, and I just wanted, you know, beg you, will somebody that's on the board maybe, you know, set up some kind of group that we can talk about this, we can address this? It is an issue of human life and property rights, and it has to be addressed now. It can't wait any longer. Thank you.
Perfect, Dottie, thank you very much. Within the time, just fine. All right, so our next caller, call-in user number one, followed by 3053. And if you are the call-in user one, please press star six and unmute. And Ryan, have you seen anything yet change on that? Okay, so no one's, no one's talking or responding, right?
We're going to call in user one?
Yes. And let me know...
Good, good morning, Madam Chair.
Welcome, Vernon.
Can you hear me? I do apologize for the mix-up.
No worries, and you have three minutes, Vernon, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Madam CAO, County Council, and ladies and gentlemen of Humboldt County, my name is Vernon Price, I am a Person With Live Experience here in Humboldt County, City of Eureka. I do apologize for the delinquency of getting to the board. I do want to thank Supervisor Steve Madron for attending March 24th, an award ceremony that I was gracious and very proud to receive an award through the state legal aid. There was two attendees from Humboldt County in this award ceremony, so I do want to thank Supervisor Steve Madron for personally being there, and one other county employee that wishes to remain nameless. But what is very disheartening is that no one from our peer support staff, we should always celebrate the small successes that anyone with lived experience has to improve the quality of their journey through life and enjoying those small successes to improve the quality of our life and building a stronger community. So I do want to personally thank Supervisor Steve Madron again for being there, and for those that weren't there physically, for being there in spirit and in heart. So thank you so much for being a part of this award ceremony and encouraging others to move forward in a positive way. So thank you all for your time and allowing me to speak openly this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Vernon. And our next speaker ends in the last four, 3053, followed by 7108. And welcome, 3053.
Good morning.
Welcome, Thomas.
Good morning. Thomas Mulder here. Sorry, I haven't followed you guys. I don't know, it's been about a month, I've been quite busy. Springtime cannabis industry, kind of hard to follow you sometimes. A bunch of different things I want to run by you. It's actually kind of quite interesting and nice to see there's, between the zoning administrator and planning commission, it looks like there's over 30 cannabis projects up for possible approval this week. So that's kind of exciting to see that many projects, quite lofty goals, but there's a lot of projects to get through by the end of 2021 if the state doesn't change its laws about the provisional licensing. In the realm of cannabis, you guys did Project Trellis, and I believe you put 10% of the MRS taxes towards promoting the cannabis industry and stuff like that. Something I've, I've been reached out to by quite a few people in driving around on more county roads as spring comes around. What about our roads? I would like to see personally, 5%, 10% of that MRS money allocated specifically for roads. And I'm not talking about going to the road's budget, I'm talking about actually properly excavating out the pothole areas, recompacting subgrade base rock, and actually properly paving this. I noticed on Dyreville Loop Road up on Fulton Ridge a couple weeks ago that there was a bunch of blade-laid asphalt in a corner, and I was watching, I was just sitting there in a pull-out, talking to a friend, and I noticed that people are rounding the corners because of the blade-laid, there's little hops, and it's actually making people's front ends hop into the other lane. So if people are traveling at high rates of speed, it can cause an accident. So let's properly improve these roads. It's really important to our community. I mean, they dealt with cannabis for all this time, some people aren't interested in it, so to give back to the community that's dealing with these businesses out there, let's improve those roads. 5%, 10% of MRS money. Also, I'd love to see MRS money as a separate light item budget, so that way everyone knows where that tax money's going. Lastly, this is a weird one on the housing crisis. You have to think state parks and Save the Redwood Leagues have been slowly picking up what would be deemed affordable housing, where you could have multiple, there's small parcels all along the avenue for the last 20 years that have been getting picked up. People could be raising food, animals, all those different types of things, maybe more than one house, and that would maybe fix the problem. But unfortunately, all those properties have been swooped up. I was early taking my son to school the other day, and there's that old homestead right off of Sammy Creek exit, it's supposedly parcel 211-381-014. Beautiful old homestead orchard's still there because people back in the day, they picked homesteads in great sight with orchards, maybe for the county to deal with the housing crisis, try to acquire that parcel.
Thank you, Thomas. All right, you're welcome. And we will now go to our last one, ends in the last four digits, 7108. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Hi, this is Bonnie Blackberry. Actually, I live off the Dyreville Loop Road. I've lived here for over 40 years, and the conditions of the roads are going down. The county's permitting all this cannabis big growth and all this traffic, and they're not keeping the roads up. So I just wanted to back Thomas Mulder on, we need to put some money in the roads. And he was talking about the 30 cannabis projects and how great that is. Well, we're in the drought. I don't know how serious all of the board thinks this is, but the forbearance got moved up six weeks from May 15th to April 1st. There's no rain in the forecast. The water table has dropped. These big cannabis operations, most of them have wells. I don't know how long you think you can keep putting straws in and drawing water out and not having serious impacts. And these big huge growths, where's all that water going to come from? I think we're just closing our eyes and thinking this is real great, we'll get all this, all these permits done, but what are they doing to our environment? I don't, there's, nobody's keeping track of how much water these wells are drawing. I'm just really upset about it, and all these generators as well. It's, how does all this fit in with the Climate Action Plan? All this stuff is just creating huge problems, and I hope the board considers doing something now, not waiting for another year. And processing all these permits, which most of them are just going through consent, is a real big problem for the county, and I think it's going to put us in dire straits. So that's my comments for today. Thanks for listening.
All right, thank you, Bonnie. Okay. We have one more public commenter, 0920. Welcome. You have three minutes. Press star six.
Hello, this is just a technical issue, but the sound is not coming through the star, the, you know, the video part of the supervisor's meeting at all, and to hear anything at all, I have to use the telephone. I don't think that is right. I think there is something, I think there's a problem there. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know, and we will go back to the board. And I do believe, and I will ask Ryan, I will, we will try to hear what's going on there, but it's actually, believe it or not, it's actually better for you to be listening on the phone than watching on the video if you want to make comment, because the phone is actually about 30 seconds ahead, and the video that you see is delayed. So you will be able to hear things actually more quickly than watching it on TV today or streaming, but I will see, Ryan, can we check with the technical...
I just checked, Chair, and it's working perfectly fine. I just heard the comment, that was about 30 seconds delayed on my computer when I turned my sound on, on the live stream feed. So I would suggest that it may just be a technical issue with the sounds of the computer, the speakers, but it is working on our end.
Ryan, is there someone from our staff, an individual, if this one person or not, I would like, can call if they are experiencing difficulties during the meeting? I think on the menu, I mean, off the menu, on the agenda, it seems like there was something mentioned, or perhaps we can work on that, just so people don't have to go through public comment.
Absolutely, yeah, they can, they can always call our office and reach out to staff member or email the email address on the agenda, the COBXCA or CO.humboldt.ca.us.
Okay, well, thank you, Ryan, and hopefully this will be resolved through this individual today. So with that, we will move on to our time set, already a little delayed, but I didn't want to have the public able to speak before we got too involved in things. So the time set that comes to us this morning is from Public Works, and it's regarding a resolution by the Airport Land Use Commission adopting the negative declaration of Route 2021 Humboldt County Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. So at this time, we are now going to adjourn as the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors and convene as the governing board of the Humboldt County Airport Land Use Commission. So at this point, I would like to turn this over to staff.
Thank you, Supervisor Bass.
Actually, I take that back, sorry, I'm going to take that away from you. Actually, there is also public comment that is allowed under this item. If you have a comment that is within the purview of the Airport Land Use Commission, you can call and speak for three minutes at this point in time, or we can take it after the, after the, actually, this is what's not on agenda. This is an unusual one, I think this is in Michelle's first one, we've had to switch hats on in midstream. So basically, if you want to make a comment that is general in nature, that's regarding the purview of the Airport Land Use Commission, you may do so now. All right, there are no hands up, so I just wanted to make sure I got that and not forgot that. All right, I apologize, Cody, now we'll move on to the actual agenda item. Turn it to you.
No problem. Thank you, Supervisor Bass and Board of Supervisors for allowing us to join this morning to cover the airport land use matter. Happy to bring forth to you today something that we've been working on with the Public Works Department. Deputy Director Bronckel was unable to join us this morning, but I did want to thank him for his assistance as we've worked through this the last couple of years. This is a product of updating a document that was 28 years old, as you can see in the documentation to the board this morning, that this was last done in 1993. And obviously, a lot of things have changed with our airports, but also with our neighbors surrounding each airport. And really, this is updating these documents for our planning efforts to make sure that we're being good neighbors as the airports and vice versa, and utilizing the land surrounding our airports in a proper way to keep everybody safe. With us this morning, we have Chris Jones with ESDA. He's the consulting firm that the county contracted with to help us develop and update this document. We did go through multiple rounds of public comment, some of which, or all of those were provided to you with the document package this morning. But I'll ask Chris to just give the board a brief overview of the process, the public comments that we received, how we worked through those matters, and we'll obviously be here to answer any questions once Chris is done presenting.
And thank you, Cody. Welcome, Chris.
Good morning. I have a brief presentation I would like to give.
Yes, please.
All right. Bear with me while I get it lined up here. Okay, so real quickly, I want to touch on the reason for the update. Cody did a good job of summarizing that, and I'll probably reiterate some of the points he raised. I'll bring up the first item on the agenda, which is the Samoa Field Airport Influence Area. I'll discuss the SEQA process that was undertaken for the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan Update, and then the comments we received, the adjustments we made to the ALUCP in response to those comments, and then we'll have a Q and A. So as Cody stated, the current ALUCP was prepared in 1993, and it included Arcata Airport, Murray Field, Hoopa Airport, Neeland Airport, Ronerville Airport, Dinsmore Airport, Garberville Airport, Shelter Cove Airport. It was only adopted for Shelter Cove Airport in 1997 and for Arcata in 1998. However, the general plans of Humboldt County and Cities of Eureka and Fortuna were subsequently updated to be consistent with the policies with the 1993 ALUCP, so it was de facto adopted for all airports covered. So the reason for the update, Caltrans Guidance on the Preparation of ALUCPs has been updated several times since preparation, the 1993 ALUCP, most recently, it was updated in 2011. And as Cody had mentioned, the county's airports have changed since the 1990s. We have new airport master plans, airport layout plans, aviation forecasts have all been updated, and these plans have 20-year planning horizons, and the planning horizon for the current ALUCP has long since passed. So this graphic shows the airports that we did include in the Humboldt County ALUCP update. We included Arcata Airport, Murray Field, Samoa Field, Neeland, Ronerville, Dinsmore, Garberville, and Shelter Cove airports. Samoa Field Airport was a new addition to this ALUCP, and Hoopa Airport was not included in the update. So the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan contains compatible land use policies and criteria used by your commission in making consistency determinations of proposed land uses in areas within the airport influence area for each airport. The Airport Influence Area, or AIA, represents the geographic extent of the Airport Land Use Commission's authority, and each airport in Humboldt County has its own AIA. And we identify the AIA as a combination of four compatibility factors divided into two review areas. Review Area 1 consists of areas within the noise contours and safety zones that have been prepared for each airport, and Review Area 2 consists of areas beneath each airport's Part 77 Imaginary Aerospace Protection Services and within an overflight notification area that was delineated for each airport. And so for Samoa Field, we prepared a new airport influence area based on these compatibility factors. We did consult with the City of Eureka in delineating the AIA for Samoa Field, and this graphic depicts the AIA for Samoa. As you can see, Review Area 2, which represents the area beneath the Part 77 surfaces, extends over the City of Eureka, and Review Area 1 is primarily located on the peninsula. So ALUCPs are land use plans, they are subject to SEQA, and that's because the policies have potential to displace future land uses from one area to another, and that has potential for environmental impacts. We prepared an initial study to evaluate the potential environmental impacts of the draft ALUCP, and in support of that initial study, we prepared an extensive development displacement analysis to identify the potential for future displacement of any development in areas around the airports. So the development displacement analysis was focused on the potential for noise and safety policies in the draft ALUCP to displace future land uses from vacant, underdeveloped parcels in areas around the county's airports. We focused on potential displacement of residential dwelling units and areas of non-residential development, and the analysis really compared land uses currently allowed under applicable zoning for study parcels to the compatibility criteria that's included in the draft ALUCP. So all parcels in Humboldt County Parcel Database located in or intersected by Review Area 1 of each airport's AIA was selected for analysis. We looked at more than 7,000 parcels. We screened them for inclusion in the analysis. Developed parcels, parcels on airport property right-of-way, and parcels owned by the State of California, the federal government, and tribal entities were excluded from analysis because ALUCP policies do not apply. The current ALUCP policies were considered in the analysis because they've been adopted by the county and the Cities of Eureka and Fortuna in their general plans, and we identified the total number of residential dwelling units and total area potentially developable non-residential uses that were potentially displaced. So starting with Arcata, we found a total of 2,384 parcels within Review Area 1 for the airport. We excluded 17 parcels as airport property, 10 parcels that are federally or tribally owned, 11 parcels that were right-of-way, 2,051 parcels that were already... uh two thousand fifty-one parcels that were already identified as being developed, and a hundred and sixty-seven parcels in Safety Zone Six that had zoning that allows for permitted or conditionally permitted land uses that are um that are compatible, basically. There there is no level of incompatibility under the the current policies for these parcels. Um, so we carried forward a hundred and twenty-five parcels for further analysis. And this map depicts the parcels um that were analyzed in uh Review Area One for Arcata Airport. The uh area in red are the parcels that are identified as approved, blue are federally tribally owned parcels, gray airport property, uh green are vacant parcels, and yellow are underutilized parcels, orange is uh California, state of California property. So our analysis results indicated that there would be no displacement due to the noise policies in the draft ALUCP. Uh, we initially identified a total of seventy-nine dwelling units potentially displaced from twenty-one parcels in Safety Zones One, Two, and Three, and um that number would be adjusted based upon comments we received on ISND um to sixty-six dwelling units. Um, non-residential displacement analysis, we had again no displacement due to noise policies and a potential displacement of up to fifty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-one square feet of two land uses on two parcels. These are temporary labor camps um and labor camps and labor supply camps, and these land uses came up again and again as potentially displaced in certain areas around the airports. The next airport was Dinsmore Airport. We looked at a total of thirty-eight parcels. We excluded one parcel as airport property, uh four are federally owned, one parcel is right-of-way, and twenty parcels were already identified as developed, so we carried forward twelve parcels for further analysis. And this map depicts the parcels that were carried forward, again, green are vacant, red are approved, blue are federally owned, and gray is airport property. Um, we identified no displacement due to the noise policies. We did identify a potential displacement of a hundred and one dwelling units um from four parcels. However, it's important to note these parcels are zoned um unclassified uh which has a uh minimum lot size of six thousand square feet. So these are very large parcels, and if you were to subdivide them by that six thousand feet, that's where the number of dwelling units uh would would come from. Um, and the non-residential displacement, we identified no displacement due to either noise or safety policies in the draft ALUCP. Garberville Airport, a total of a hundred and ninety-six parcels were identified as being within or intersected by Review Area One for the airport. Uh, we excluded one parcel as airport property, three parcels were state-owned, a hundred and fifty-three parcels were identified as being already developed, and a parcel is located in Safety Zone Six with zoning that had no uh permitted or conditionally permitted land uses that would be incompatible with the draft ALUCP. So we carried forward thirty-one parcels for further analysis. And here the map again shows the parcels that were evaluated around Garberville Airport. Uh, we did identify a potential displacement of two dwelling units due to the noise policies. They are located in the CNEL sixty-five to seventy-decibel contour, and a total of seven dwelling units would be potentially displaced from three parcels due to safety zones. Um, and there was no displacement of non-residential land uses due to the noise policies, and we had a potential displacement um for on two parcels of two land uses, again, labor camps were were the land use that would be potentially displaced. Neeland Airport, uh we identified a total of eighteen parcels around Neeland Airport. Uh, we excluded uh two parcels as airport property, two parcels that were identified as being already developed, and seven parcels in Safety Zone Six uh with zoning that had no land uses that would be incompatible with the draft ALUCP. So we carried forward seven parcels for further analysis, and and here are the parcels um around Neeland Airport. We identified no potential for residential displacement in areas around Neeland Airport, and there is uh no non-residential displacement due to noise policies. Uh, we did identify potential displacement on um of four land uses on three parcels, and these were labor camps, again, uh and hospitals and kennels, and rental and sale of irrigation equipment and storage. Murray Field, we looked at a total of a hundred and twenty-eight parcels. We excluded two parcels as airport property, sixteen parcels that are state or federally owned, and eighty-seven parcels were identified as already developed. So we carried forward twenty-three parcels for further analysis. Uh, this map shows the parcels, um again, orange is state-owned, blue are federally owned parcels, red um improved, uh yellow underutilized, and green being vacant. We identified no potential for residential displacement in Review Area One from Murray Field. Uh, for non-residential displacement, again, we identified no displacement due to noise policies, and we did identify potential displacement of labor camps on five parcels around the airport. Ronerville Airport, um we looked at a total of one thousand six hundred and ninety-eight parcels. Uh, we excluded one parcel airport property, three parcels that are state-owned lands, uh thirteen hundred and one parcels that were identified as being already developed, and three hundred and thirty parcels in Safety Zone Six with zoning that had no permitted or conditionally permitted land uses that would be identified as incompatible with the draft ALUCP policies. So we carried forward sixty-three parcels for further analysis. And this is a map um that shows the parcels evaluated around Ronerville Airport. We identified no potential for residential displacement in areas around Ronerville Airport, and for non-residential displacement, we had no potential displacement due to noise policies. Uh, we did have potential displacement, again, of labor camps on twenty-four parcels in Safety Zones Two and Three. Samoa Field Airport, we looked at a total of two hundred and thirty-nine parcels. Uh, we excluded one parcel as airport property, two parcels federally owned lands, eighty-nine parcels identified as being already developed, and a hundred and thirty-four parcels in Safety Zone Six that had zoning with no permitted or conditionally permitted land uses that would be incompatible with the draft ALUCP policies. We carried forward thirteen parcels for further analysis. And this map shows the parcels that were considered. We identified no potential for displacement of residential uses in areas around Samoa Field due to the policies in the draft ALUCP. Uh, non-residential displacement, we identified no displacement uh due to the noise policies, and we identified one land use, hunting, fishing, and development of minor facilities uh such as hunting or viewing blinds that would be potentially displaced for one parcel in Safety Zone Two. Shelter Cove Airport, our our last airport, uh we evaluate two thousand three hundred and eighty-one parcels in Review Area One for Shelter Cove. We excluded six parcels as airport property, forty-four parcels that are federally owned, five hundred and fifty-four parcels that were identified as being already developed, and one thousand six hundred and forty-nine parcels in Safety Zone Six that had zoning with no permitted or conditionally permitted land uses that would conflict with the draft ALUCP policies. So we carry forward a hundred and twenty-eight parcels for further analysis. And this map depicts the parcels around Shelter Cove Airport. As you can see, there are multitude of single-family parcels in Shelter Cove. So our residential displacement analysis, we identified no displacement due to the noise policies in the draft ALUCP. We did identify one uh displacement of one dwelling unit uh due to the safety policies. This was on a parcel located in Safety Zone One, which does not allow uh development of really anything. Um, then in terms of non-residential displacement, uh we did displacement due to noise on seven parcels uh of a variety of different uses um in Safety Zone Two and four to three parcels in Safety Zone Five. And these are uh typically uses with high intensity um uh attractants like uh commercial, retail, restaurants, so on, or low-mobility uses uh such as daycare, hospitals, um retirement communities, so. So even though we did identify potential for displaced land uses, it was determined that the number of residential dwelling units in the area and type of non-residential land use potentially displaced would not result in significant environmental impacts. There are plenty of other areas uh within the areas around the airports in which these land uses could be developed, and this would not negate development of of a lot of other different land uses on the parcels that were identified. So we prepared a negative declaration, which we bring for you forward to you today uh for your consideration and adopt and adoption. Um, the ISND was released for a thirty-day public review period that ended on March fifteenth uh twenty twenty-one, and as Cody mentioned, we had also previously uh released the draft ALUCP for a thirty-day public review um in October. Um, we held a virtual public workshop on March eighth, twenty twenty-one, and we had a few participants uh join us for the workshop. We did receive a total of uh four comment letters, and based on the comments received from the public, um we we looked at the potential for increasing residential densities in Safety Zone Three south of Arcata Airport. Um, we uh reanalyzed aeronautical data for areas within Safety Zone Three off the left side of the runway one end, and the analysis concluded that um we could increase the residential density from uh zero point five dwelling units uh uh per uh acre to four dwelling units per acre. And so we uh adjusted that Safety Zone to Safety Zone Three asterisk, and this map shows uh the safety zone we're talking about right here. That's where we increased the residential density in the draft ALUCP. And that's the end of the presentation, so I, if you have questions, I can help you to answer them.
Well, Chris, if you would, uh stop sharing. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, Chris, and and thank you for Zone Three, because in Arcata, that was a uh fairly significant thing, and just in some of the other areas. I know we've got, on some of them, we have up to eighty percent of the safety areas are already developed, I noticed. So does that mean if you had four houses on one block and there were three empty lots, if they fall into one of the safety zones, they wouldn't be able to build on those three other lots?
We have a policy in the draft ALUCP that if your parcel was zoned for uh residential use or would allow for residential use, and all those, almost all the zoning districts in Humboldt County allow uh for some form of residential development um that you are, you have an exception. You can develop a single-family residential unit and an accessory dwelling unit on that parcel.
Okay, because we're in a position, I don't think we can um actually take any residential units out and and just in in my ideas of of being around the area and stuff like that, the lower-priced or more affordable housing tends to be in the noise zones of an airport. And um and I just, we hate, I I just don't want any of those to come out of inventory, if at all possible.
Um, only one airport was um had residential displacement due to noise, and I, that was Garberville. So none of, none of the airports were affected.
All right, thank you, and again, thanks for getting Safety Zone Three out of there in Arcata. That worked out great.
You just actually, um Chris, you guys just solved a mystery for me I never understood. Um, my sister had this great house in McKinnonville um in the eighties that was right on the strip. You know, you'd go outside, and they were both pilots, and it was, you know, it was the coolest place to be. And then, you know, years later, when they sold, it got taken down, and I didn't understand why. So finally, I understand, so. Thank you for solving that mystery. Um, any supervisors have any questions before we go to public comment? Supervisor Bushnell?
Hi, I'm Chris. I'm wondering if I'm gonna, um, what's a labor camp? I don't know what that is.
Uh, labor camps are like temporary labor camps. If you have like a large stand of of uh trees, for example, that need to be cut down, it would be like a temporary facility for housing the workers.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, I I want to thank you, Chris, and and Cody for your responsiveness to the concern of some of the residents in McKinnonville that ended up in that Zone Three. Uh, and we're able to work that out with you guys, and I appreciate the extra effort you made in the analysis uh to make sure that that uh that was going to be okay. Um, you know, I I worry about those folks that aren't paying attention, and they have changed their parcel and didn't really get a direct notice. And someday, they're going to figure it out and be like, well, wait a minute, when did I lose that situation? So I I I do worry a little bit about that, but I think you guys have done a fantastic job. You've been responsive to those members of the committee that have uh submitted comments, and so I applaud you for that. Uh, look forward to the completion of this, so we can move on with lots of other business with the airport. So thank you for your work, Cody and Chris.
And Supervisor Bushnell, do you still have a another question? No? Um, I'll let's see if there's anyone in the public who'd like to comment on this item. And if you're interested in commenting, press star nine. All right, it appears we do not have anyone interested. Sorry about that. They don't know what they're missing. Um, all right, then we can either have further discussion or we can uh make the suggested recommendation from the staff report, what we all like to do. Anyone else have more conversation? Does someone want to make a motion then? Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, I would move the uh staff recommendation.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Like pulling teeth today.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, so with that, Ryan, will you please do a roll call vote?
You chair, Supervisor Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson is absent.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you both, Chris and Cody. And at this time, we are going to adjourn as the um Airport Land Use Commission and reconvene as the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors. So with that, we will move on to our next item. Items pulled from consent. Uh, I did want to clarify, when we changed the agenda not too long ago and added the roll call as an official item, it ended up moving consent calendar from being a C to a D. So in the future, we'll we'll try to keep track of that. We just realized it, so uh just wanted anyone who's listening and might look at the agenda and going, well, what's this C, when is really D? You know, I'm not sure if anyone is going to do that, but um Cody noted, not Cody, Ryan noticed this. I hope that um helps solve that mystery. So so items that were pulled from from D, we did have uh D fourteen, I believe, from Supervisor Bone. If you wanted to uh um bring that one forward, I see Director Beck on.
Yeah, and and again, I I I got a phone call from somebody that was very concerned about this, and they 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 had some valid questions, and it was at four minutes to nine, so I just thought I'd, Connie, if you could explain what is going on here um that we're not taking? She was worried that we were taking people away from mental health when at a time when we needed it. So I I apologize for the short notice, but.
Yeah, I know, that's really fine. And after reviewing the agenda item, I could see where some folks might be a little worried, especially when we were just talking about Laura's Law um last week. So just to a little history, the Home Program um has historically only served our our um severely mentally ill, chronically homeless. So um when we were, when we're housing folks in that program, um if we did assessments and people didn't meet the criteria, then we would let them know that we couldn't serve them in that program. We are expanding now to try to refer and make sure that all all homeless people are are getting the right service in the right program that they need. So we've been reviewing that over the last year. We are not taking any positions away from behavioral health. Um, the the positions that that we are utilizing there were already assigned to the Home Program, and they were only seen severely mentally ill. As we know, not all homeless people meet the criteria for severely severe mental illness. Um, and we need, and we have several other programs within DHHS, housing programs that can help um with them. In addition to that, we have permanent supportive housing units that that need um staff to serve them. So with the inefficiencies of the behavioral health budget, um other funding sources available for the population, we've changed, and I guess I should back up and say, with the community health outreach workers, um, they can do outreach and engagement, and and we can claim for those those funds with our mental health case managers and clinicians. If a person isn't open to services, then we can't claim for services under behavioral health. So this is, we're just being strategic in trying to serve this population and trying to do the best the best we can with what we have. Um, so I I don't know if that answers your question or if it gives you more questions.
I apologize, and it's not my question. I'm hoping Ginger is on here. She was trying to figure out how to call in, and I was trying to explain it to her with two minutes to go, so maybe, I don't know, if she's in the queue for.
You know, Supervisor Bone, thank you for mentioning that, because I see I had a call come in from um uh Ginger's. from Ginger's partner, and it's not, I didn't listen to it because it's in. So I have a feeling they are trying to reach us.
And I was just trying to, she seemed really concerned and very polite about it. And it was last minute, I understand, but at times, if we can serve our folks and get them the answers on a timely basis, and this is my timely basis, I guess. I appreciate you jumping on this, Director Beck, and...
Of course. And then Ginger should know that she can always contact me if she has questions about what's happening or how we're trying to serve the community.
If she can't figure out this world of Hollywood squares, I'm sure Virginia can share her number. And I've got her number, and you can give her a follow-up call, so she gets her answer, which may be the easiest way to go. But basically, we're not taking people away. We're just shuffling a little bit.
We're trying to be more efficient?
Yep.
And serve more...
It's not a word we hear with government very often, so thank you.
Well, now, I'm hearing, and Director Beck, if I'm wrong, it also sounds like, you know, and part of the strategic is being able, we can still provide the services, but also receive funding that could be available in just coming from a different angle. Is that okay?
That's right. And we're trying to use the proper classification for the staff that's doing the work.
Okay. And if you, by the way, if you're in the public and listening and care to comment on this item, press star nine so that we know you want to comment. All right, Supervisor Madron? No, did you have your hand up? Nope, sorry. Well, no one has a question right now? Nope. Okay, well, then let's go to public comment. And we do not have anybody in the queue for public comment. So we will go back to the board. And is there a motion to be made to accept staff recommendation? I know someone wants to make that. I will say Supervisor Bone is now going to be momentarily missing for about 10 minutes. He has a very special event regarding some funding for a project that's been going on for 10 years in his district. So he's being called to a different Zoom to introduce the folks who are part of this. So he apologizes for not being here for this vote, since this was the item that he pulled. But anyway, if someone can make an item, a motion, don't wait for Supervisor Bone, is what I'm trying to say. Just make a motion, please. Supervisor Bushnell?
Do you want a motion to adopt staff's recommendation?
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Madron, or would you like to second that?
I'll second the motion, and I'll just make a quick comment, and that is that I do very much look forward to Connie and Emmy coming back and presenting to us a little bit more detail about these shifts in staffing. You know, I am a little concerned, we're eliminating five positions but adding two. I know we're having a hard time hiring people for positions. So, you know, I have a lot of concerns around this particular issue. But Director Beck and I had a good conversation yesterday, because I also had concerns about this item. We spoke yesterday. I do believe that Connie and Emmy have the best sense of what's going on in their departments, and I value their work and their opinions and recommendations. I just very much look forward to a little bit more understanding of where we're at with staffing and mental health, and what we can do as a board to help support, you know, the needs of the community and all that. So with that having been said, yes, I do second it.
All right, thank you. And at that point, Ryan, will you please do a roll call vote?
Yes, Chair, thank you. Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell? Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone is absent for this vote, same with Supervisor Wilson, so it passes 3-0.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, we will move on to our departmental item. Oh, and I did want to confirm that the other item that was taken off of consent wasn't moved to be discussed. It was going to come back to us at a later date, so in case someone is wondering about that other item. So this item comes to us from Planning and Building. It's regarding the Code Enforcement Unit Annual Report, and I'd like to turn this over to Director Ford.
Thank you, Chair Bass. It is my pleasure to be here with Karen Manell today. She is the supervisor of the Code Enforcement Unit to provide the annual report of what code enforcement has done for the year of 2020. So with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Manell to go ahead and present the successes and challenges that we faced in 2020.
Okay, I am going to go ahead and share my screen. So, good morning, Board. My name is Karen Manell. I'm the Code Enforcement Manager for the county. And a little bit of background, this report describes the activities of the Code Enforcement Unit during the 2020 calendar year. When Code Enforcement was transferred to the Planning and Building Department in 2017, the Board directed Code Enforcement to actively pursue illegal cannabis cultivation and junk vehicles on private property. The Board adopted two ordinances which established the procedures for noticing, abatement, appeal hearings, assessments, and liens. Code Enforcement is separated into two teams. We have the Humboldt Environmental Impact Reduction Team, who uses satellite imagery to survey areas for illegal cannabis cultivation, and more recently, has also used the same satellite imagery to conduct compliance review for approved cannabis permits. The traditional team investigates complaints and actively addresses junk vehicles on private property, as we have no jurisdiction for vehicles located in the public right-of-way. There are a number of tools that Code Enforcement uses to address public nuisances and violations. First, there is the Notice to Abate Nuisance, or NTA, which gives the property owner 10 days to voluntarily abate the public nuisance or request a public appeal hearing. Failure to do that within a 10-day period gives the Code Enforcement jurisdiction to conduct the abatement of that public nuisance. The Notice of Violation and Proposed Administrative Civil Penalty, also called just Notice of Violation, or NOV, this gives the responsible party 10 days to voluntarily correct the code violation or request an appeal hearing. If the code violation is not corrected within that 10-day period, a daily penalty will come in. The daily penalty continues for a period of up to 90 days, and the penalty serves as an incentive to act quickly, and we have found that many owners can complete abatement within the 10 days without any penalty. Another tool that we use is called a compliance agreement. We use this to achieve compliance when the full abatement cannot be completed within the 10-day timeframe. Staff will attempt to enter into a compliance agreement with the property owner, and this outlines the public nuisance and the code violations that exist, and it also outlines the corrective actions that are required by the owner. Also included is a timeline for when those actions need to be completed. This is a very useful tool, because it provides clear expectations about what corrective actions are required and when they must be completed. In 2020, there is an amendment to the original ordinance, and this amendment gave Code Enforcement a way to address repeat or ongoing cannabis violations. It provides for an immediate imposition of the administrative civil penalties. And again, this is just for repeat or ongoing cannabis violations, and only under certain circumstances. So the certain circumstances are, if the following items are true, then we would still give the 10-day noticing for the period. So the only time that this would apply is if there was a tenant in possession of the property. I'm sorry, this would not apply if there was a tenant in possession of the property, if the owner and their agent can provide evidence that the lease or rental agreement prohibited cultivation of cannabis, and if the owner or agents did not know that the tenant was cultivating. So only under those circumstances would we apply the single-day imposition of the administrative civil penalty. I'd also like to note that we did not implement this measure in 2020, although the ordinance was passed in 2020. The same ordinance, the 2646, the amended version, also allows for the recordation of the Notice to Abate Nuisance and Notice of Violation, and this is to prevent violations from being unknowingly passed on to new property owners or prospective buyers. So the ordinance, the 2576, does outline the process for the workflow, and I'm going to go into this just a little bit. To break it down, we have, when a complaint is received, the case is assigned to staff who will conduct initial research and inspect. They will try to get an inspection. They will request a consent inspection, but if the owner is uncooperative, then an inspection warrant is needed. After the inspection, if the complaint is unfounded, we will close the case. And if the complaint is verified, then we will move on to the next step. So once we have a verified complaint, staff will collect and organize evidence, and then we can offer the property owner a compliance agreement to abate the public nuisance, or we can serve a Notice to Abate and a Notice of Violation, or we can do both. If the property owner enters into a compliance agreement and abates the public nuisance, the case is closed. And if the compliance agreement is breached, then we can move toward county abatement. As mentioned previously, the NTA and NOV can be appealed, which requires the additional steps of the appeal hearing and various court appeals. At the conclusion of all the appeals, and assuming all the rulings are in favor of the county, the county can move toward abatement after having acquired the jurisdiction to do so. So planning a county abatement includes verifying current conditions on the property, securing a contractor, obtaining an abatement warrant, and then finally cleaning up the site. Following the cleanup, there are still steps to take, which involve collecting on the penalties and assessments that have accrued before the case can close. This process can take a considerable amount of time, and in each of these steps represented here, there's probably dozens of smaller tasks that happen behind the scenes. Okay, so to put the workflow into more context, I'll go into the details of how traditional cases work. The traditional team responds to complaints of public nuisances and code violations, and receives hundreds of complaints every year. Each complaint is logged and prioritized based on the severity of the impacts to public health and safety. The violations with the highest priority are investigated first. Most cases are having to do with improper storage of solid waste, junk vehicles, grading, and construction without permits. And when a complaint is received for a potential public nuisance, a traditional case can take several paths forward. Code Enforcement staff will initially conduct research and reach out to property owners to educate them on the actions necessary to abate the public nuisance. Some property owners are cooperative and willing to come into compliance, and others are not. Unwilling property owners can and do make the process painstakingly slow and arduous. Staff must obtain an inspection warrant for each site visit, and just that process alone takes the better part of a week to submit to the courts, receive authorization, and then post at the property. So the traditional team currently has 700 cases that are open, and approximately 450 of them are still unassigned to staff. A full-time workload consists of approximately 40 cases. Our two most seasoned staff members each have over 75 cases assigned to them, while our two newest staff members hired in November and December of last year have about 35 cases each. There's clearly more work than the current staff can address, and there continues to be more cases opened each month than closed. With the staffing level as it is, we're constantly getting pulled off one case to work on another, and that is the worst possible way to manage these cases. The most effective way to be successful in managing these cases and gaining compliance is to apply constant and consistent pressure on the property owner. We literally must babysit these cases. If we give the property owner 10 days to make improvements to the site, we need to be able to check back in with them one day at a once. If two months or longer goes by because we've been pulled to another case, we have not only lost the momentum, but we have demonstrated to the property owner that our timelines are meaningless, which makes gaining compliance even more difficult. This issue, more than anything else, impacts our ability to see these cases through to an expedient and successful completion. Once a complaint is verified by staff, we can serve a Notice to Abate and a Notice of Violation, or a compliance agreement, or both. Many property owners are successful in completing the abatement within the specified timeframes of the compliance agreement, but just as many fail, and the compliance agreement is breached. At this point, several months may have gone by with little improvement to the property, but not because Code Enforcement staff isn't actively working the case, but due to the property owner failing to perform their obligations of the compliance agreement. With both the Notice to Abate Nuisance and Notice of Violation, property owners have the option to request an administrative appeal hearing. The county has a professional services agreement with the California Hearing Officers, who assigns an impartial hearing officer without our input from a panel of their hearing officers to oversee the hearing. The preparation for an appeal hearing is a significant time commitment for our staff. We have to spend time communicating and always negotiating with the owner. We always try to attempt to settle the case before going to hearing. Then staff spends time serving the notice and attending the hearing, and not to mention the exhibit packet, which takes, you know, 15-plus hours to prepare. These things are 200 to 300 pages in length and provide all of the county's evidence for the public nuisance. At the appeal hearing, the hearing officer will hear all the testimony from the county and from the property owner if they attend. They'll review all the exhibits and make a decision. In 2020, there were two appeal hearings that we took. And that was lower than normal, just because of COVID, we were unable to do appeal hearings for a major part of the year. In this particular appeal hearing, the county requested $450,000 worth of administrative civil penalties. The hearing officer reduced those to $360 due to the owner's inability to pay, and these have both been appealed to the Superior Court. So several of our cases that were taken to appeal hearings before 2020 have been appealed and have worked their way through the Superior Court and the Court of Appeals. And those courts have issued some of their rulings in 2020. On the traditional side, there was a case in Trinidad that worked its way through, and the Superior Court issued its ruling and imposed a $45,000 penalty. This is a case that dates back to 2012 and involves extensive violations. A separate case in Myrtle Town was ultimately dismissed after several filings and motions, and this case involves an unpermitted building that was converted into and is being used as a single-family residence. These rulings from the court now pave the way for the county to move forward on abatements of both of these properties. Also in 2020, there were five cannabis-related cases that were making their way through the various court challenges. In each of these cases, the hearing officer found in favor of the county and also ruled and ordered administrative civil penalties on the property owner. So here are the penalties issued by the hearing officer, and these cases were all appealed, and some of those rulings have come back, and here are the court orders of penalties on those same cases. So when property owners are unable or unwilling to address the public nuisance and code violations on their property, the county can step in and perform an abatement. In 2020, we performed one abatement, and that was at a junkyard in Dinsmore. And these images show the before and after of the aerial images of the property. The abatement process can, again, take considerable amount of time. It involves the planning, the scope of work, and retaining the contractor, executing the contract, coordinating schedules, and then preparing and filing that abatement warrant to allow us onto the property. And the casework doesn't end once the property is cleaned up. There are several steps necessary to properly assess the property for the costs incurred by the county for the cleanup. So this particular abatement in the Dinsmore Junkyard began in 2018. The property is about six acres. It was full of junk vehicles, appliances, vehicle parts, scrap metal, tires, oils, drums of oil, and this is all on the bank of the Van Duzen River. So the property owner attempted to work toward cleaning up the property, but there was little progress made. So the county issued a request in February 2020 and received a qualifying bid from Hudson, the contractor, to clean up the site. The abatement activities began in October, and although the August complex fire impacted our schedule, we did conclude in December of 2020. There was an enormous amount of material removed from the site. There was over 400 vehicles. Most of them, we didn't even know were there until we started digging in the berry bushes and discovering these vehicles. There's just dozens of truckloads of scrap metal and tires and debris that was removed from the site. And now the site looks more like this, and... But it is an example of how long this process can take to address the public nuisance and violations. This case in particular took three years. We had a cooperative owner, and this case, still, we have a second phase that we'll be entering in. that we'll be entering into to address removing vehicles in the embankment of the Van Duzen River. There was also some buried drums that were discovered, so we're going to have to remove those, and then there's a soil remediation to do. So, now talking about assessments and liens. When a case has accrued administrative civil penalties, and we have jurisdiction to collect those, the property owner served a notice of assessment. And the property may request an appeal hearing within 10 days before the Board of Supervisors. But if no appeal hearings requested, then the board summary has a summary approval of that assessment. The final assessment approved by the board may become a lien against the property. In 2020, the Board of Supervisors approved assessments for 13 properties in the amount of $10.9 million. An assessment to recover the cost of the county abatement, such as the Dinsmore Junkyard, can become a lien or a special assessment and collected in the same manner as property taxes. So, even though the total amount of the county assessments to date is a big number, we have to keep in mind that the amount only represents the degree to which the property owner allowed the penalty to accrue without dealing with the violations. It doesn't represent the amount of money in the county's pocket. It's very unlikely that the county will collect on the full assessments for many reasons, including any other encumbrances ahead of the county, ahead of the county lien and the value of the property, and that the collection would require the county to undertake a civil foreclosure on the lien and force the sale of the property. So, gonna move over to the AIR team, the Humble Environmental Impact Reduction Team. As previously mentioned, they were directed by the Board of Supervisors to actively enforce the CCLUO, Commercial Cannabis Land Use Ordinance, to reduce environmental impact. And examples of those environmental impacts are storage of hazardous materials, solid waste, grading and construction without permit, to name a few. The AIR team also conducts inspections with the Sheriff's Marijuana Evacuation Team and California Department of Efficient Wildlife. In 2020, we served 103 new violations, NTA and NOB. 65 of those were in collaboration with law enforcement agencies. 21 of those cases have requested to enter a compliance agreement, and these are no penalty compliance agreements. These are offered to property owners who have done what they can to abate the public nuisance to the greatest of their abilities, but require more time for reasons beyond their control. So, for new 2020 cases, there were zero compliance agreements that involved penalties. 23 of the 2020 case, new 2020 cases are either completely abated or nearing abatement. For cases that originated before 2020, code enforcement entered into 28 compliance agreements, and 11 of them included penalties for a total of $245,000. So, toward the end of 2020, the AIR team assisted with an effort to review all cannabis applications for compliance. The goal was to identify applicants who were cultivating without an interim permit or exceeding the square footage of their interim permit. It was also to notify applicants of their 2019 taxes owed, their state license status, and whether their application was complete or incomplete with the county. Each site was reviewed using the satellite imagery and resulted in the applicant getting one of three letters. The first letter went to about 200 applicants who were observed to be in compliance, meaning they had cultivated within their allowed square footage, their taxes were paid, they had a state license, and their application was complete. And these folks got their IP extended through 2021. The second letter went to about 260 applicants. They were in compliance with their IP, but they were missing their taxes maybe and didn't have a, a complete application. And then there was a third letter that was sent to about 160 applicants who were observed to be cultivating without an IP at all or in an area greater than allowed by their IP. And those applicants were offered the option to pay a penalty to continue in the process, provided that the cannabis was removed, or they could withdraw their application. So, COVID and the wildfires, and code enforcement certainly hasn't been immune to the impacts of COVID and the shelter in place. It really hampered our ability to conduct inspections and post notices, and we actually stopped the clock as far as counting on 10-day timelines and administrative civil penalty accrual during the shelter in place. The traditional team noticed a tremendous increase in the number of incoming complaints during the shelter in place, which staff attributed to people being stuck in their homes and noticing things in their neighborhood that they may not have noticed before, but were disturbing. Code enforcement continued to respond to all health and safety issues throughout the shelter in place. In fact, we worked closely with the Joint Information Center to address complaints, and we provided staff to work at the Joint Information Center, which meant that we had fewer people here to address the increase in complaints we were receiving. In 2020, the AIR team had planned to address those properties that had received the letter at the end of 2019. Those are the letters, if you remember, that informed property owners that we had observed unpermitted cultivation on their properties and warned them against future enforcement if the activity continued. Instead, with COVID, the AIR team used the time to use the satellite imagery to perform IP and permit compliance review on a grand scale. And that was very helpful for us to know the status of all of these applications. And even with the challenges presented by the shelter in place, the AIR team initiated 103 new cases and assisted with 65 law enforcement warrants that brought on those cases. So, here is some data, two, some data tables to share. These are traditional cases for 2020. There's 203 new cases. Of those, 59 have been closed. We did do the one county abatement of the Dinsmore Junkyard, and we still have 106 of those 203 that are unassigned to staff. Here are the cases broken down by Board of Supervisor District. And you can see in District 5, there are the most traditional cases. In District 2, there are the most AIR cases. And I just noteworthy also, in District 5, there's the second most AIR cases. So, here's information about the 2020 cases opened by the AIR team. There was 103 new cases. 65 of those were in conjunction with a warrant. We've closed 19 of them. 14 of those cases have entered into no compliance, no penalty compliance agreement. And we have not had any compliance agreements involving penalties in 2020. And then there's three appeals requested. So, this table is representative of the letters that were sent to, this is the review that the AIR team did of permit compliance and IP compliance. So, of the letters that we sent, we sent 204 to people who were in compliance and had their IP extended in 2021. There was 261 where there was maybe taxes missing or an incomplete application, but they were cultivating legally. And then there was those that were cultivating without an IP or in an expansion of their IP. These folks were offered a penalty in order to continue in the process. And you can see how many were resolved with no penalty, those with penalty withdrawn and unresolved. Some of these that were resolved with no penalty were due to people growing in the greenhouse with skins on, and then after receiving our letter, providing evidence that the, there's nothing in the greenhouse, or what is growing in the greenhouse is not cannabis. And then, finally here, we have the AIR data. So, in cases that originated before 2020, we did have a lot of actions on them by the AIR team in 2020, so we did take two of those to hearing. We noticed for assessment 26 of them, and 13 of those have gone to the board for approval, again, for a total of $10.9 million. And no penalty compliance agreements. We entered into 17 of those with pre-2020 cases. And then we entered into 11 of those with penalties for a total of $245,000. And then, some of the cases that predate 2020, we did go on to warrants, and those were 29 of those. And I would just like to mention with the penalties, the penalties for the letters, the penalties for compliance agreements, and our administrative civil penalties, all of those funds go into the County General Fund. And so, that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Karen. I always find that an absolutely fascinating report, frightening in many cases. Any supervisors have questions or comments, Karen or John, or Director Ford? Rex, I see you look like you want to talk.
Well, I have, I just checked. I have over 75 messages from a house you boarded up on Friday. And we got that one done in speedy time. But, but it got done, and I like the aspect that we're not moving too far away to get the next one. They, they both have the, the same reason the houses got in. They were left to them by people that had passed, and I'm sure taxes, everything else. And I know, I don't want to be number one, but with a whole bunch of the stuff I've got going, I may surpass Steve in 2021, because I've got so many working right now that they really hate me. I know Karen does. But it's, it's, you know, you laugh, it's the broken window syndrome you hear on the TV shows and stuff, but it, one goes bad, the rest go bad. And I feel really bad on a lot of these, is they all seem to have a neighbor that has lived next door for 40 years, then all of a sudden this comes upon them the last five years. And it's, it's unfair to them, and it's just basic decency. So, I, I know this process moves slow. I know all the rights lay in the person that is habitating the property or destroying the property, whichever way you want to look at it. But I know the neighbors appreciate all the efforts being made. I've heard the ones, you know, just south of us in Fields Landing, those neighbors, you guys have been out there on a regular basis, and I always get texted right afterwards. Your team, they were out here, they were out here. So, people are, some people are really excited to see you guys, some not so much. But I really appreciate it, especially for Walnut Street. That's been a huge problem, and the other ones you're doing, so thank you.
And another supervisor have any questions or comments? Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, sure. Well, first of all, thank you, Karen, for the great report, and in particular, for the incredible work that you and your team do. I mean, I can't even imagine how difficult it must be to go to these properties and try to get compliance, both because of economics, and maybe all kinds of other issues going on in those places. Not a real safe place to go, and I just, you know, I, I worry a little bit about the team and the danger they get put in, but I know John keeps a good eye on all that, and if necessary, links in with law enforcement, et cetera. I'm not surprised that the 5th district is the largest on the list for traditional code enforcement. It's the largest district in the county. It only has one town, one city, that's Trinidad. So, basically, the entire district is unincorporated for the most part. And, you know, I think many of these problem houses have been there for a long time. But I will say that under COVID, they've kind of exploded in terms of their impact on their neighbors and the neighborhood. Not that they were brand new, but for whatever reason, you know, they've become an even bigger attractant to people coming and going from those sites. And they bring in all kinds of stuff, but nothing ever goes away. So, the mounds get bigger, the problems get bigger. It spills out onto the neighborhoods. So, I appreciate the report and the data. I have been getting increasing calls over the last six months, kind of off, off the scales, basically, of people concerned and complaining. And I know you guys are doing everything you can. So, really, what I look forward to is our budget discussion here coming up this next month, and the discussion about the need for more staffing to be able to deal with all this. The other thing I want to try and figure out is, are there ways that we can further incentivize the cleanup such that, you know, we spend so much money chasing after all these things that almost never get cleaned up, and then we're going to inherit a whole lot of properties with massive liabilities? And, you know, so for me, even if we have to spend some money to clean it up and assist the landowner upfront, if that leads to the property staying clean and moving forward, then that's the ideal outcome. I know that's what we're all trying to, trying to do. So, for me, I just am wondering if there isn't a way to further incentivize, you know, you got to go through all the legal process, identify the problems, do the notice of violations, notice of abatement, et cetera. But I'm just wondering if at that point, we might be able to have some money in the budget to come in and assist with the cleanup, with the understanding that the landowner is going to then need to maintain it in that condition. And if they don't, then all of those costs, all of those fines and fees come down on that landowner, including the liens. You know, but I really would like to see that as sort of a final step. And I think it would be cheaper for us as a county to even get more aggressive with assisting people if we think there is some chance that they might actually be able to maintain it in that condition, which I know is not always the case. But mostly, I really value your work. In my district, we do have cannabis abatements as well. I know there's been a lot of concern about all that process, but, you know, it's not fair to those compliant people to have people running around doing things illegally as well. So, it's a real balancing act. Bottom line, I value you guys' efforts. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron. I'm gonna ask, Supervisor Bushnell? Okay, she's nodding her head, and then Supervisor Bone?
I would, I would agree with Supervisor Madron, except the Walnut Street House, we now own it because we've cleaned it up four times. So, and, and, and what it is, it's, it's kind of like people that have habits. It's pretty hard to break a habit of picking up after yourself. I still don't pick my socks up on, off the floor 67 years later, so. I'm, I'm just, I, I like the idea, but I think the idea, I, I just, I, I don't think, if we could throw more money at it, we, we just, we just gave John quite a bit of leeway on code enforcement to get some of these things up with contractors and stuff. So, I think the best thing to do is cut our losses sometimes, even though as harsh as that may be. Walnut, Walnut Avenue was, is, is nine years at the making until we got to that part, because we were following all those guidelines and trying so hard. But the neighbors shouldn't put up with nine years of that. So, I mean, I, I appreciate staff trying, but I, and I appreciate your compassion, but sometimes we just have to cut our losses and clean the neighborhood up.
All right, back to Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you, Chair Bass. Hi, Karen, I haven't officially met you, and I'm going to ask some questions just because I'm new to the board, and so I have some thoughts and questions. I hope that's okay. I wanted to know what, how many staff work on the traditional and how many staff work on the cannabis abatement program?
We have four on each team.
And then I, do you happen? Thank you. And then do you happen to know how many in cases in 2019 went to? You said there was two in 20 because of COVID. Do you know how many in 2019, off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, I'm going to estimate there was roughly 10.
Thank you. And then I wanted to ask about the satellite usage. And in the last few weeks, I've gotten quite a few concerns and calls. I think, you know, mostly just wanting to know. And so, I want to know the full round, rounded efforts that you use the satellite for?
Okay. Well, as you know, we use it for unauthorized cannabis cultivation. This, last year, we also used it to review permits that are in the application process and permits that have already been approved. It allowed us to conduct an aerial review of those sites to see that they are in compliance, or in some cases, not in compliance, and kind of flag them for perhaps a site visit on the ground, saving quite a bit of staff time, having to go out to these sites on the ground, every single one of them. The other thing that we've used it for on the traditional side is, you know, as I mentioned, we have hundreds of cases that have been unassigned. And in trying to triage those, we use the aerial satellite imagery to look at those cases. And so, for instance, if the case was junk vehicles and solid waste on a property, we can use the aerial imagery to look at that property and see, are, is that still the case? Or has this been cleaned up? Because some of these cases that we have are quite old, or maybe we inherited from before code enforcement company, the building in the planning department. And so, we can look at those and say, oh, no, I can see right here. There's no solid waste or junk vehicles anywhere on this property. We can, you know, close this case from the office. You don't even have to drive by or... from the office, you don't even have to drive by or get an inspection, and that saves an enormous amount of staff time on the traditional side.
Okay, if you could, go ahead.
I could add to that, beyond code enforcement, the imagery is also used by building. Before we go out and do site inspections to look to see if the site plan is corresponding to what's actually there and can be seen. We're trying to minimize the amount of time we spend driving to and from sites, and to the extent that we can use the aerial imagery to verify that a site plan is correct, that only helps us. In terms of current planning, it's kind of the same concept, we use it to verify in-ground truth information by, by looking to see what the vegetation patterns are, the things that are going on on the site, whether or not we can see, whether or not there's something that needs to be looked at, so. Not everything do we just immediately always need to go out and look at. It's very helpful to have that resource available, and and that same concept applies to the cannabis applications, the permitting as well. So within the five units of the planning and building department, all of them use that imagery at some level.
Thank you Director Ford. I, so that, I just want to be very clear, that imagery satellite is not just for eradication or code enforcement due to cannabis then?
That is correct.
And if you could estimate, estimate the percentage that is used for cannabis? Would it be low, low or mid?
For the overall cannabis effort, it's probably a higher percentage, but the cannabis effort includes permitting, compliance, and code enforcement.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. I had a, Karen, you had made a statement about abatements being issued to greenhouses with skins on, and it was, you were referring to that there was no items in those greenhouses, so you cleared. I'm wondering, with those abatements that were issued to those greenhouses with skins on, were they not, were they in the process? Were they greenhouses that weren't? You know, what, can you talk a little bit about that, please?
Sure, so that was part of our letter campaign to see if the applicants who were in the cannabis application process were in compliance, and so people who are in the process, some of them have interim permits, IPs, and some don't. And some that have the IPs, you know, it comes with a set square footage of what you're allowed to grow, so. What the air team did was do the aerial review to determine, you know, the square, what square footage is they were seeing for cultivation on a site. And then we would compare that against what was approved on the interim. So we, we sent, we sent letters, it wasn't a notice of violation or a notice to bait, it was just a, I'll call it a warning letter saying, hey, you know, we see that this is going on, this is not what you're approved to do, so you need to come and talk to us, and if it's true that you were growing outside of your IP authorization, then there's going to be a penalty to pay if you want to continue in the process. So what, what happened in some of these cases is that people called us and said, oh, you know, I, my greenhouse is up, which is fine, and they have their skins on, which isn't okay, and inside those greenhouses, they could document and showed us that what was growing were vegetables, or it was fallow, or weeds, you know, just, you know, dandelions. And so those we were able to resolve without any penalties whatsoever. And then the cases where they, you know, got caught, then they paid the penalty to continue in the process. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I saw some of those letters, so I hope in the future we can just be kind of redesign the letter if we send those out again. I also had a question about, so the status letters to cannabis application, so you were going through the numbers of unauthorized cultivation without IPs, of the eighty-six and nineteen were unresolved, and three were unresolved, what does unresolved mean?
That means that maybe we haven't heard back from them. It could be that they've never contacted us, and so we have to decide now what to do about this. And, you know, I don't think that's a discussion we've had in our department yet about, you know, what are we going to do about the people who we sent a letter to because it looked like they were, had unauthorized cultivation, and we haven't heard from them, and their application's incomplete, and maybe they haven't paid their state taxes, and you know, what are we going to do about these these, these types of projects? And so it could be that, or it could be that we're still trying to, you know, get evidence, or maybe they say that they don't have it there, maybe they're still going to provide evidence, it's just, they're, I would just call them pending, we haven't resolved it one way or another.
Okay, thank you. And then my final question, and thank you for allowing me, it clarifies things for me. So the financial impact is, it says we collected nine hundred eighty-three thousand dollars, and the out, the, the assessments are for ten point nine million and that haven't been paid, and I see on the page, you know, where they were assessed. What is the intent to do with these? They're just sitting there? These, these monies just sit there, these fines just sit there, or what is the process?
Okay, so the, the items that are in that chart that you're referring to, those have been assessed and approved by your board, and what the next step in the process would be for us to record the notice of lien against those properties. At this point, at this point, we have a handful of properties that we've recorded the lien for, and that's where the process has stopped. We haven't initiated any kind of foreclosure or civil action on any of the liens. And as I mentioned previously, the likelihood of us recouping the number that you see on that page, the ten point nine million, is really low because it would require all of the encumbrances ahead of us on that lien to be paid. The property value would come into play, and then it would, the county would have to actively take civil action to foreclose on that property or force the sale of that property to collect. And that's not something that we have done, so. Like you said, it is sitting there as, you know, something that, you know, we have assessed, but we have not taken the next step, and the likelihood of collecting on that full amount is fairly unlikely, and John, do you have another more to add to that?
Well, I think Karen, you answered that perfectly. The one thing I would just remind the board of is the purpose of the fines and penalties really is to encourage compliance. And we run into these situations when people just absolutely do not respond, as Karen mentioned. This is the result of, of people not being responsive. And, and so that number seems really, really high, and it is, in terms of what the lien number is, but in terms of when these are resolved and push comes to shove, and we have to foreclose, that, that probably, that won't be the number. And we're realistic about that. But this is a result not of a desire to try to generate money for the county, but of a desire on the county's part to encourage compliance and people not complying. And, and so that, that's the, the struggle we're having.
So, thank you Director Ford, and Karen, I want to ask another question then, also pertaining to the same issue. So if our intent is to levy these liens to, to try to activate the owner into compliance, have we revisited any of these to see if now they're ready to comply and to reduce these fines amounts instead of basically just having it sitting there and doing nothing with it?
So one of the things that we have not been in a real big hurry to do is to record the liens or to pursue foreclosure, because the ordinance does allow us to settle at any point. And, and so we absolutely, above everything, want to settle before we get into having to foreclose on property. We're not in a hurry to do that. We are in a hurry to achieve compliance and to establish properties being in compliance to have their nuisance removed.
Thank you Director Ford. Can you answer the other portion of that question, if we, have we re-engaged with these applicant?
Have not sent subsequent letters, but we, we can and we will.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, and thank you very much for answering all my questions. I apologize being new, but thank you very much.
Supervisor Bone, and then I have a question.
Oh, Karen, on those, on those areas, the ones that we haven't foreclosed on, or, you know, that could be in the path, are we following that to see if they're even paying their taxes, or have they, have the owners just walked? Because a lot of those I know will be, will grow areas in areas that they actually can't rectify because it's TPZ or too much slope. I mean, it's just, it's, it's, it's unrectifiable, or the damage is too much. And maybe an adjoining, if they're not even paying their taxes, we might be able to say, hey, I think they may have walked. And in a case like that, maybe an adjoining property owner, even in a fire sale, but then we get, you know, we'll get it rehabilitated or actually put it back on tax rolls, or however, even, even slight as may be, but then, but then you have somebody overseeing it, and it doesn't become, in some areas, I know we've had problems with people have just left, and other people just come in behind them because there's nobody overseeing the property. And with our hands-off approach, we might be aiding and abetting rather than actually fulfilling the objective that we tried.
Yeah, we have had a situation very similar to what you bring up, having a neighboring property owner interested in assuming one of the properties that has been assessed. And this kind of answers Supervisor Bushnell's question too, is that yes, of course, we, you know, worked with that new property owner to, you know, come to an agreement about what needed to happen on that property to bring it into compliance, and that assessment would not apply to that new property owner, so. While, you know, to answer your question, we don't actively go look at tax records to see if, if people are paying their taxes. We do check ownership records and keep track of the, the properties, and if, you know, if they change hands. People often call us and are interested in the properties that have been assessed for purchase, and we're always willing to work with new property owners to, you know, work out a negotiation where they can assume the responsibilities of the property without giant penalties.
Well, and Karen, I was through the chair, I was just saying, I'm not saying chase the tax records, but that's a good way to know if you've got an abatement from two thousand nineteen, you're getting no response from the individual, no conversation, letters are coming back, P O box, and then you check the taxes, and they're not paying their taxes, it might be a, a thing that they, they just got caught, or they have just decided to move out, and they made their money before we caught them, and they're just walking away from that, and then we, then we solve the problem that we don't take those properties, we actually just, that we, we become a throughput, so. That's the only thing I'm looking at, just, that's just another tool you can use to say, hey, before we try to chase them any longer, they're not talking to the tax collector either, so.
And Supervisor Bushnell? Can you put unmute?
Thank you. So these are not assessed liens on these properties? They, they don't have a lien against it?
Correct, the, the ones on the list for two thousand twenty have not, do not have a notice of lien recorded, yes.
Oh, how, how, if that property goes up for sale and someone else buys that, they have no idea that they are assuming a debt of nine hundred thousand dollars, how, I mean, is there any notification that goes with this APM that this is pending?
So as I mentioned, the, the new ordinance that was passed in two thousand twenty allows us to record the notice to abate nuisance and the notice of violation, which gives a fair warning to anyone buying if they do a title search that there are nuisances located on that property. And so we, we have been working to get all of our cases recorded. We have quite a few, so we've been doing it in batches, but we're working to get them all recorded so that exact situation doesn't happen.
So that ordinance that was put forth in two thousand twenty, is that retroactive or passed?
Yes. Well, it's silent on that topic, and so because it's silent on that topic, we are taking it to mean that we can record notices that were issued prior to that.
Okay, thank you.
So I did want to ask a couple of questions myself. Not that I have a whole lot of, well, luckily, you guys don't have to deal with what's in the middle of the city, but there's enough other abatement issues, but for the county piece, I was curious, I, I know we talked about, you know, one of them, and I know which one it is, that has units that were not properly done, basically. And I believe they're also, you know, what happens when, when that is the case, and someone has built, and then there's this sticky situation of if they're affordable units, then how, how do these things mesh? Because, you know, we can't, we can't reward people for building things they're not supposed to, but at the same time, losing housing is, is a really, like Supervisor Bone, I think, mentioned earlier a different, losing housing is also a really problematic as well, so do we, have we actually had, what, what do we do in that case? Or do we, have we, are we trying to figure that out still?
Well, in, in that case, I think, given the recent state law changes with regard to accessory dwelling units, with that particular case, I think a couple of those units are quite small, it might qualify as what's known as a junior accessory dwelling unit, and so that case, we may be able to take it, and look at that under a new lens and find a creative solution there, given that the state law has changed in the course of that case being, going through the courts and the appeals. But as far as the question, the larger question, certainly, we try to find a way to get those sites permitted, we don't want to make anyone houseless. You know, but we do also have to abide by the building codes and, and planning codes, and so, you know, we do the best we can, but there are limitations to how far we can push it.
And I, and I understand, it's just one of those things I figure eventually we'll hear, and then my last question, it's pretty, obviously, most of what, I mean, there certainly are a fair share of, you know, junk yards and things, but not nearly to the extent of what we see generally in a lot of the other districts. But some of the things that people call me about are the more simpler, you know, problem neighbor who, you know, repeatedly takes over the whole sidewalk, lets their yard grow in, and all the junk gets in the middle of it, and and it's just, you know, things like that bother people too. What, what can we do, because it's, it's like, those don't, those don't rise to the level of, of, obviously, what we saw today. What is the best path? Is it just, you know, should we still reach out to you so the, you know, someone can at least touch bases with the person that, that actually, it should be a pretty simple process to do what they need to do? Or do we just tell people who complain, I'm sorry, there's nothing we can do about it, there's four hundred and fifty others not in the queue, and, you know, how, and you guys are, I'm sure, we're calling all the time, and I, I believe we probably pull you off of certain things, you have to bounce to another one, and then another one of us calls, and you bounce to this one. What do you do for the ones that don't rise to the level of what you were showing us today? I mean, what should we, but could we, but what can we do, and how do we work with the folks who are still upset about what they're having in their neighborhood?
Well, absolutely, I would say, call us. You know, we will do something, and what we've instituted very recently, you know, in two thousand twenty, was just to send an automatic letter to the property owner to identify the complaint that was made about the property, and to ask for them to give us the call or to, you know, address the complaint, and sometimes they never call us, but you know what? They clean it up because they really don't want to deal with us, and so they'll just clean it up to avoid having to talk to us. And so by all means, do call us. The situations where, that you're describing where the violation or the nuisance is, it's situational, it might not be a constant problem, but maybe, you know, somebody has a garage sale every weekend, and it's just a nuisance because they have it every weekend, or somebody's riding motocross bikes in their backyard, and it only happens, you know, Saturday morning occasionally, but it's really a nuisance, and those are the ones that are pretty difficult for our staff to follow up on because, you know, we don't really stake out places and wait for things to happen, so. And if they're happening, you know, at a time when we're doing other things, it's, it's hard for us to, you know, catch them in the act, so to speak. So those can be difficult, but by all means, do let us know, because there are things that we can do that don't take a lot of staff time and resources, but can be very effective.
All right, thank you Karen. Director Bushnell, and then supervisor, I mean Supervisor Bushnell, and then Supervisor Bone?
I, I have two, two, two questions. One is with the vehicle abatements that you guys do on people, people's property, is that complaint-driven? abatements that you guys do on people, people's property, is that complaint-driven?
The junk vehicles is something that, that your board has asked us to actively enforce, junk vehicles, but we can only do that on private property. And so if it's parked in the right of way in front of somebody's house, or out at the beach, those become really problematic because the jurisdictional boundaries there get a little muddy. If it's not on private property, then it could be one of three agencies, it could be, you know, C H P, or the Sheriff's Office, or Public Works that would need to get involved. But by all means, if it's on private property, code enforcement is the agency to call.
Okay, thank you, but that's not really what I was asking. What I'm asking is, is it complaint-driven most of the time when you get about junk vehicles on people's properties that you're dealing with, on private properties? How do you, how do you identify? How are you identifying those?
Okay, so yes, they are complaint-driven most of the time, they are complaint-driven. However, if our staff sees junk vehicles present, and they look like they're junk vehicles, and I won't go into what that might look like, but you know, if they have, if they don't have four tires or something, then, then we will actively enforce those with or without a complaint.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question, we, and I just kind of want to hit on this a little bit. In the Southern Humboldt area, we've had, I think recently, we did a cleanup down there. And, you know, we hear a lot of public comments and so forth and so on about, I wasn't given a chance, I, I wasn't notified, I wasn't this, I wasn't that. I just want to clarify that, that's not the case in any of these cases.
Correct, that's not the case. Each, each case, not only would they get, you know, usually an initial call before any kind of noticing happens, to just take the temperature of the owner, and, you know, what, do they know that there is an issue? Is the owner occupied, is the tenant occupied, or in the case you're talking about, you know, do they know that this is something that needs to be dealt with? You know, we'll try just to educate first, and then when that doesn't really get us anywhere, then we will serve the notices, which of course spell out all the timeframes involved. That particular case was on our books for, I think, over a year and a half. And we repeatedly, repeatedly, you know, talked about what needed to happen. The building department was involved with that, and sent letters about what needed to happen, and gave deadlines. And none of those deadlines were met. So, that's why we moved forward with that case, because we were getting a lot of complaints about it.
Thank you, Karen. I really appreciate the clarification. I haven't asked Director Ford directly, and so this is just a good opportunity, and, and you know, sometimes perception is not what it seems. So, thank you.
Supervisor Bone?
Well, and I think code enforcement, you have to realize up until a few years ago, everything was complaint-driven. They were, kind of didn't go out and look for anything, or they drove right by it, and then, and then we said, are you serious? We drive by things, you can't do anything. And so that was, we reenacted that you guys could act on things, which I think was so important. And then the other thing is, as people say, well, I, I want to fix it and everything else, I don't think you, and, and, and this is, the way the process works, I don't think you've ever gone to a site, and within a month started cleaning it up, or two months cleaning it up. The process takes so long. And, and, and it's not because you guys take so long, it's just, we're protecting everybody's rights to, to the extent of nauseam, but. So I don't think you've ever just worked with us for 15 days, we can fix this, because you've been working quite a ways, you know, with that already, so. I appreciate that. And then my original question was, I'm getting a lot more of these calls, I haven't been calling you, I shouldn't say that, but did somebody give away free roosters here a while ago? Because everybody's got a rooster in their backyard. I've got two of them next to me, and it doesn't matter to me when they sound off at five, I'm already up, so it doesn't bother me, but I know other people are asking me, can they have a rooster?
It's not just your district.
No, I know, I, I, that's what I'm saying. Did Nielsen's give away free roosters and something, and, you know? Sorry.
We do have a lot of rooster complaints.
You get a lot of.
We do have a lot of those.
Chicken in every pot. Or pot in every chicken.
Thank you Supervisor Bone. And Karen, you did say, that is not an unusual complaint apparently you're receiving.
Correct, we get a lot of rooster complaints, and we follow up on them because they can be very annoying, and they're not too difficult to follow up on. Usually the owner kind of rolls their eyes and says, oh yeah, I know, I have a rooster, I, you know, I thought it was all going to be tens, but it turned out I got a rooster, and so, you know, they, they.
All right, well, I will go out to public comment. I will say, Supervisor Madron, did you have any questions before we go to public comment to staff? Enforcement. All right, at that point, we will go to public comment now. If you are wanting to make a comment on this, be sure that you have called in and pressed star nine, so we know your hand is up. And we at the moment have one person with their hand up. And I believe the number is, sorry, I lost my little notebook here. Where are you here? Oh, 0151, sorry about that. So, 0151 followed by 7108. So, welcome. You have three minutes.
Good morning again, this is Dottie Russell from Southern Humboldt. So, I've been listening as carefully as I can to, to this conversation. And I think that there are some solutions, and I would like to be part of the solution. So, the purpose, so John said, the purpose is to encourage compliance. I also heard that $10.9 million of penalties, and taking properties away, the whole thing doesn't make sense because one doesn't lead to the other. So, you know, the other thing about the timeline, there was a comment that was made about in 2020, and I don't know where my notes are on that. In 2020, they stopped the clock because of COVID. Well, that's not what happened to us. So, if, if a clock is stopped, it doesn't mean you stop it, and then you just start it whenever you want, you're starting it again. But, you know, so there's some issues that are going on right now, that are all over the county. And yes, it's true that the, the clock was stopped. You need to start it fresh with these people and say, okay, it's fresh now. Why it's fresh, if we're still doing, doing Zoom, I have no idea, but anyway, whatever it is that you're planning to do now, that you didn't do when COVID was different than it is now, which I'm not clear on, we need to do, I would like to be part of an ombudsman program that says, let's get this right. Let's fix this, nobody wants neighbors upset. Nobody wants people homeless living on the streets catching COVID and spreading it to everybody else. Nobody want, I mean, even the people that are doing it don't want it, have people hate them. So, let's, let's look at it realistically. Let's looking at, let's look at it holistically, and say, we can solve these problems. So, as far as, you know, some of these situations that I'm involved in, I just, you know, so somebody can say, oh yeah, we offered a compliance agreement. And then the landowner can say, I never got a compliance agreement offered to me, which is the case for me. So, I'm fine with somebody telling me what to do. So, many years ago, I was given a notice of violation, was that a, a beep, or no?
Yes, it was.
So, it was, okay. So, I need to insist that somebody that is on the board is going to take this forward, call me, and let's talk about how to move forward. Because I'm out of compliance, but people are telling me that they don't know if I'm in compliance or not, because they don't know when the permits were pulled. If they don't know, how am I supposed to know? It's impossible for me to know, and it's unfair to be treated like this. And I absolutely need.
Thank you very much, Dottie. Thank you. All right, bye-bye. And we have another one, I believe, it might be Bonnie, 7108, you are next. And if you're interested and someone else wants to call, you better raise your hand now, because this is the last public speaker unless someone else raises their hand. So, welcome, and you've got three minutes.
Thank you, this is Bonnie Blackberry, who years ago was on the Code Enforcement Task Force, so I've been trying to pay attention to what's been going on, and I really appreciate that we have a yearly report, and all the information that's in there. The the tables that are in the written report, and, and how things were shown in the slideshow were different. I don't know why they couldn't be the same. And charts really help with information. The details, that, what do they call, the data detail are these spreadsheets that I tried printing out, that comes out so small, I have to use the magnifying glass, and then it's still difficult to read it. I don't know, the PDF says it's 27 pages long, but these spreadsheet things are, I don't know how many pages they are, I can only print out part of them. So, thanks for all the information, but finding out, you know, what's what, it's not organized in any manner. It would be really helpful if it was grouped in districts, so a supervisor could look at what was happening in their district, instead of having to go through, I don't know, eight pages of stuff. And I don't think any, any of you have the time to do that. So, I think there's a lot of useful information to know about what's going on in your district. So, I don't know. I just think there's a better way to format and organize this information instead of just this random all over the place, data detail. The traditional code enforcement, it takes a really, really, really long time for a lot of cases dealing with garbage and, and vehicles. How long would you say it would take once the county knows about a junk vehicle that's say, a few feet away from a water court, to do anything about it? Because, yeah. Um, let me see. So, group them by district.
All right.
Because I think that would help out a lot.
Thank you for calling in. Okay, what looks like to, could be the final speaker, and ends in the last four digits of 6267. Press star six to unmute, welcome, you have three minutes.
Hello, good morning. I had a chance to glance at your code enforcement report, and I'm from Phillipsville, and that's delusional. You are, you need to come down and spend time and talk to the people. Southern Humboldt doesn't get a fair cut here. And we've had abatements here. I mean, you came three weeks ago. The only reason code enforcement came three weeks ago is because fishing game forced your hand. We've been complaining for years. There's been abatements that have been left open for years. It's bad, it's really bad. You guys are really good at giving yourself good grades. I really wish you could spend more time, and you have boots on the ground and get a reality picture, not a satellite view. Because it's not reality. It's really, it's really sad because I've tried to get copies of the reports from Karen Maynow, from John Ford. Didn't even get a return email from him. So, yeah, it's not working. You don't work with the public. So, it's real sad. I'm, I'm really hoping we can get a little more help down here. We had a hash lab burn, we're supposed to be cleaning that up. I thought County was cleaning it up. If they were, did they have a burn permit? Did they burn, they were burning crap from a hash lab. They weren't burning yard waste. You guys are, I don't know, your satellite isn't serving you. I don't know, I'm really sad. It makes me sad to think that this is what you think of yourself. You're not doing the great job you think you are. So, let's, let's get some reality going. Let's get some sanity here. My neighbors are suffering. The same stuff is still going on that happened three weeks ago when you came here. The traffic's back. It's, it's not good. My neighbors still, they're all suffering. It's bad, I mean, they've tried to work with you, they've called, some people even called on a daily basis. Got no help. So, it's not working, code enforcement, malignant dysfunction. I'm really sad, so I hope you guys can fix this. We need some help. Please. Come help us.
All right, thank you for calling in. All right. I do not see any other hands up, I will look one last time. And there are none, so we will return to the board, Director Ford.
Thank you Chair Bass. I just wanted to respond to a couple of things, just really. Starting with the clock being stopped, there were some things where the clock was stopped, but stopping the clock doesn't mean that we go back and start the process all over again. It meant that there were things that we could not do, like go to court, during that period of time, during the COVID restrictions. So, it's really important to understand that. I'd also like to point out that we did put in the report, the districts in which the violations are located. And while it's not sorted by district, the middle column, or I'm sorry, I think it's the third column, clearly shows the, the district that each one is in. And, and so that information clearly is in, in the spreadsheet, is in the report. And as has been discussed, it does take traditional enforcement, and air enforcement for that matter, a long time. One of the things about code enforcement that I, I, I want to say, and I've said this before, nobody's happy with the timeframe. For the person that's being enforced against, it happens too fast. For the people who are complaining, it takes way too long. And, and, and so, that, that is a, a common reality that we deal with. And I, I do want to respond to the last speaker in, in saying that, you know, she mentioned Phillipsville and concern with Phillipsville. I, I don't want to say too much, because it's code enforcement, but there are things that we're aware of, that we definitely have prioritized, that we're definitely working towards. We did disclose the caseload that we have. And, and so there, there is a concentration in, in Southern Humboldt, that we are definitely looking at. And it is a definite priority for us, and we are definitely on our way. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you Director Ford. Are there any questions for Director Ford? I don't. Supervisor Madron?
I would move that we receive the report.
May I get a second, please? Supervisor Bushnell, I see you nodding, can that be a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right, well with that, we'll go to Ryan for a roll call vote.
Thank you Chair. Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Madron?
Yep.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Thank you, Pastor Sforo.
All right, so we will move on to our closed session items. Prior to going into closed session, there has been a request, at least one, to take a brief break, so we will take a, we'll reconvene in closed session at 11:20. So, County, Council Billingsley, can you brief us on closed session?
Yes, thank you Chair. It's the intention of the board to meet in closed session on two items related to existing litigants. It's the intention of the Board to meet in closed session on two items related to existing litigation under section 549, 56.9 D1. The first is the case of Gamma Rielo versus Moore, case number 520CV2583. And the second is the case of Hummap versus Humboldt County, case number 180425.
All right, thank you. I'll go to the public to see if there are any comments on those items. And I do not see any hands having been raised. So return to the board. Um, and what I would also, Supervisor Bone?
Was there only two items on closed session?
There's a, a third one was, um, uh, pulled, that was in the, we moved that earlier, we pulled that earlier.
Oh, that was the one, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, go ahead Chair, sorry.
No worries, I had to figure it out, I had to ask for help, just to be sure. And then I wanted to say, so we will go to, we'll convene in closed session at 11:20. And for anyone who is watching this and, you know, plans on coming back, uh, we will be back, starting back up at 1:30, at which time we will report out of closed session. So with that Supervisor Bushnell is ready to run, it looks like. All right, we'll see you guys later and, uh, take 10 minutes. County Council Billingsley, uh, to report out, do we have a report out of closed session?
Thank you Chair. On items M1 and M2, there's no reportable action.
All right, well, thank you very much. And with that, I'm still waiting for one more Supervisor to come on, but we won't keep waiting, he'll, he'll be on, I'm sure. So at this time, our 1:30 time set comes to us from Human Resources and it's regarding the adoption of a new job classification. And I'm going to turn it over to Linda Lee and Scott, I believe, and whoever else you have on your presentation.
Thank you Madam Chair, good afternoon. Madam Chair, the Honorable Board Members, CEO Nielsen's and County Council Billingsley. Thank you for the opportunity to present this item before your board this afternoon. The item here is the adoptions of a new job classification of Assistant County Administrative Officers, Chief Financial Officer, approval and allocation of 1.0 FTE Assistant County Administrative Officer, Chief Financial Officer in Budget Unit 103, County Administrative Office Management and Budget Team, and approval and adoptions of an amended and re-titled job classifications of Assistant County Administrative Officers, Chief Operating Officers. With me presenting this item today is Mr. Scott Johnsons and Mr. Justin Knox of MGO. And through the chair, with your permission, we would like to share the screen to present a PowerPoint. Thank you.
Yes, please. One of these days I'll get that button. All right.
Staff has prepared this.
No, actually, I appreciate the bigger print. So, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Again, this PowerPoint presentation is to highlight the staff report and, um, we have prepared a brief agenda, um, presentations. And with that, I would like to present this PowerPoint, um, next slide. The recommendation before your board is to establish the positions of the Assistant County Administrative Officers, Chief Financial Officers. In this presentation, we will discuss the background, the work plan, the analysis of the Superior Counties Agencies and the recommendation. Next slide. As you will recall, back in December of 2020, the, uh, staff report to your board identified there's a need to establish a Chief Financial Officers in the County Administrative Office. In that report, the 2018, 2019 report by the Humboldt Grand Count, Grand, Humboldt County Grand Jury also recommended that your board approve of funding for an accountant in the County Administrative Office. Again, on that same, um, December 2020, your board also approved a contract with MGO to provide interim financial advisory services to supplement the work that's currently performed by the county staff relating to financials and analysis. The board directed my department to conduct a classification review and to develop a classification specs for the positions of Chief Financial Officer. In that motion, your board directed that the CFO would not duplicate the duties of the Auditor Controller. I would like to extend this time that great care has been taken by MGO and myself to ensure that there is no duplications of work in relations to the creations of the Chief Financial Officer. And more details were explained at the later slide. MGO was tasked through the County Administrative Office to work with me specifically on this effort. And with that in mind, I'd like to turn the next slide over to Mr. Scott Johnsons to discuss the work plan, the analysis and the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you Linda. Madam Chair, members of the board, Scott Johnson from MGO. We're pleased to, uh, jointly present this report to your board. As Linda had pointed out, we worked directly with Linda and we developed a work plan outlining the tasks that were necessary to conduct this classification review and develop the classification specifications that are before you today in your packet for the position of the Chief Financial Officer. So first, you know, just a few highlights on this slide. We developed an understanding of the CFO job duty expectations. Uh, we also developed an understanding of the County Administrator's Office and the countywide organization and its structure. We analyzed the County Administrative Officers Executive Management's tasks roles and responsibilities and, uh, gained an understanding of the Auditor Controller's Office to ensure that there would be no overlap of duties with the proposed CFO position per your direction, as Linda had pointed out. We also then, um, through this work plan, we identified other agencies that had similar complexity, a similar size and/or that had a similar position. And we, and we then identified the core competencies, the responsibilities and the reporting criteria. So through that, we narrowed this down to 15 Superior County Agencies that we identified. In addition, your HR Director, um, polled the County Personnel Administrators Association of California. And, uh, that staff report provides the result of the, uh, the polling of that survey. And we developed a matrix that showed the comparisons to Superior County Agencies. And then from that, we developed a preliminary job specification description that, uh, is in final proposed form in your packet today. Uh, we reviewed that with the CAO, um, and based on in, input from the CAO, uh, we revised to the final form that you have today. Justin, on the next slide, I just, your board, I, I wanted to talk about the analysis of the Superior County Agencies. So as I mentioned, we narrowed this down to 15 Superior County Agencies. We noted that 10 had an elected auditor controller or a similar type position. Five of those 15 county agencies did not have an elected controller position. And six of the 15 Superior County Agencies basically had a, what they call a consolidated function, um, as in relationship to the state government code. Um, examples are where it could be the auditor controller, uh, the auditor controller, treasurer, tax collector, auditor controller recorder and so on. So these positions, of the six that were consolidated, were either elected or appointed. Um, of all 15 Superior County Agencies, they had a director of finance or a similar classification. Um, we noted that 14 reported to the County Administrator's Office and one reports to the Board of Supervisors. Now they had, this highlights kind of the overall general responsibilities that the CFO would have, has of the 15 Superior County Agencies that we looked at. They have budgetary, finance, countywide leadership, countywide coordination and collaboration, and then a myriad of special projects. Now, in your packet, we've included attachment A, which is a CFO summary matrix where we've identified areas of existing and future opportunities for collaboration, teamwork and partnership, um, with other county departments, including the Auditor Controller's Office. And I also want to point out those duties and responsibilities uh, that we highlighted in the, in this CFO summary matrix are similar to the CFO responsibilities and duties of the Superior County Agencies. And so just by stepping back into it, this is a summary in attachment A of those duties and responsibilities. And what we did in that matrix is we identified, we were very mindful to make sure that we were not recommending a duplication of effort or redundancy. But we did identify some areas in which there are existing collaboration and partnerships with the Auditor Controller's Office and the County Administrator's Office. Um, some of those currently exist. Others, we identified for those duties and responsibilities, there's, there's further opportunities for that collaboration. We're not proposing a duplication of effort. We're not proposing to take away any duties of the Auditor Controller's Office. But these are clearly in an organization of your size and complexity, these are duties and responsibilities that you would see of a CFO that oversees countywide fiscal operations and coordinates and is a liaison to the Auditor Controller's Office. And I think I've mentioned to your board in the past that in my former life and my role as an auditor, control, uh, treasurer, uh, auditor, excuse me, Controller Treasurer for Santa Clara County and as a Chief Financial Officer for large municipalities like the city of Oakland and the city of San Jose, um, we're proposing a similar structure that I'm, I'm used to seeing in my professional career. But I want to really reiterate, this is not a duplication of effort of any of those job duties and responsibilities. Um, clearly in an organization of this size and complexity, you would expect that someone at this level in the organization, at a leadership level, would have the responsibility overall countywide to coordinate with your Chief Accounting Officer, who is responsible for the timely and accurate reporting of your financial transactions. So duties that we outlined in the summary matrix are much broader than that and providing that leadership. But again, we want to acknowledge the opportunity of the teamwork, the partnership and the collaboration with the Auditor Controller's Office. So moving on, therefore, you know, due to the, on the next slide, our recommendation is, and this is a joint recommendation with Linda Lee and MGO in our collaboration and working on this project and the hours that we spent on it and the analysis that we did, the detailed understanding of the peer agencies of what the job duties and responsibilities are for their CFOs. Due to the complexities and challenges of the county's fiscal position and based on this analysis, we recommend that the board establish an Assistant CAO CFO position. So this would be a position that would report, we recommend and we propose, report to the Chief Administrative Officer and have the responsibility to provide necessary budgetary and fiscal leadership to the county, coordinate, manage and oversee and implement fiscal policies and issues with the county leadership, coordinate and collaborate with the Auditor Controller's Office, recommend financial, fiscal and administrative actions to departments and county administrator and the Board of Supervisors to improve the county's operations. And then finally, to represent the County Administrative Officer as directed and act on his or her behalf as requested or required. So with that, I think Linda was going to finish off our presentation and then we'd be available for any questions if you may have.
Yes, so next slide. So, um, in finals, um, I just wanted to share with all of you that since fall of 2020, uh, my office has taken many organizational studies as directed by your board. And this is one of four organizational studies. And, um, I stand by this study, um, to echo Mr. Johnson's past life. I too has a past life as a finance director, as the Assistant Treasurer Tax Collector's and serving in the role for both large counties and to municipal cities. Um, I am accustomed to the structures of having a county administrative officer, having a CFO, or the city managers having a Chief of Finance Directors or Chief Financial Officers, depending on the job classifications. Um, we take great pride in the studies and we, um, are here available to answer any questions that you may have for us. So that concludes our presentation this afternoon.
All right, uh, Linda, thank you. And Scott, if you want to stop sharing, um, I did want to ask, as you're doing that, if we have questions, it's pretty easy just to share it again, right Scott?
Yes.
I mean, it would not be easy for me because I don't know how to do it still, so. All right, so, um, I'd like to add, any board members, uh, have a question at this moment? Uh, I'll make sure, let me make sure everybody's here. Uh, okay, yes Rex?
Sure.
Okay.
I think it sounds great.
All right, thank you. You and Steve turn your lights, lights on the same time. Um.
We were hanging out.
All right, anyone have a question before we go to public comment? I, I have a question then. And I think you covered some of this already, but I, I know we got an email with some concerns regarding, um, some of the, some things from the auditor, and I believe you two have been in contact. So I, I just was wondering, are there any of those you wished to highlight, other, what Scott hasn't brought up yet? I just wanted to make sure I had everything, um, hopefully covered.
Through Madam Chair, is that question for me?
Yes, please, I'm sorry Linda.
Yes, I, I have the opportunity to exchange conversations with the Honorable Auditor Controller Karen Paz Dominguez, trying expressing the concerns. And I think I understand where, um, the perspective here is the actual, the compensation studies or part of that in, in relations to the, um, directed auditor control or staffing study. Um, as you will recall, um, Scott and John, Scott and I are partnering in conducting that analysis. We are very pleased with the partnerships and the progress we are making in respect to that study. Um, and definitely her concerns, um, are well taken. And I will be meeting with the Auditor Controllers as we wrap up our, um, data analysis and try to fold in some of the concerns that she raised regarding the staffing compensations for the Auditor Controller's Office. Um, but I wish to, um, delineate that this is a two different studies. Um, today we're talking about the directed study classifications for the CFO. And, um, I'm hopeful that in the next few weeks, um, we'll be able to finish the next study and to bring it forth to your board for discussions. And I also wish to say that, um, it has always been my sincere hope that any organizational studies that I've conducted in the past, current or in the future, that there is always a strong personal and professional desire to add value to the organizations. And that will be, um, my motto, continue to move forward to ensure that every single aspect of an organizational study is addressed so that we can really move forward and advance the interests of the county. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I want to thank you also for, uh, reaching out and, um, and probably laying uh, some of the concerns that there were. I really appreciate what you told us just now, so, as well. At that point, is there anyone who wants to make comment from our board? If not, I will go to public comment. Rex? I mean Supervisor Bone?
And we're talking, Rex virtually will. I know we're talking about Assistant County Administrative. I know we're talking about assistant county administrative officer, chief financial officer, but I didn't hear much about an amended and re-titled job classification of an assistant county administrative officer, COO. So I, can I, that's, is that just, I haven't heard anything about that. So can we get, everything was focused on the other one, it seemed like?
And through the chair, thank you Supervisor Bone for that question.
You're welcome.
Part of an organizational study is that we have to look at equitable distributions of the classifications and the job duties. And currently, the county as a structure has a classification assistant county administrative officer who is currently performing both the operational sides and the fiscal side and other special duties. And as reported in the staff report, the complexities and the ongoing and increase in regulatory changes creating such a demand and the bandwidth capacity. So to ensure that we can move forward and to have a clear path in terms of financial management, operational management, and the accountability of that, it is recommended that we retitle the current job classification assistant county administrative officer to be the assistant county administrative officer slash chief operating officer. Both positions are basically the same structures of any organizations or in the business entities. You have the CEO, you have the COO, and the CFO, working in tandem to, again, continue to move forward the needs and the operational demands of the organizations or the business entity. So to ensure that there is an equitable distributions, it is my recommendations that we address that so that there will be no disparity in terms of the compensation. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Any other questions before we go to the public? Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, not really any questions. I appreciate the presentation and the effort. You know, I think the, as they say, the proof is in the pudding, right? I appreciate the words, the directions, the things you've identified. I did see that the auditor controller had some concerns about the language of collaboration and cooperation. What does that really mean? Who's forcing who or whatever? You know, and I'm just going to accept this in the spirit that it's been presented, which is to try and repair, rebuild, and enhance, and really get us all operating together in a great way. And I know that's the spirit and the intent of this. And I do appreciate that even in the auditor controller's response, she also recognized that. She recognized that there is a strong need to be a team player and to be working together on all of these things. So I'm confident that the weight parity issues will be sorted out down the road with the comp and class study as well as other types of things. I'm sure there'll be still some little odds and ends to work out in terms of collaboration and cooperation. But I like what I see here. I mean, when we took a bunch of actions a couple of months ago to provide support in the AC's office, we also talked about the need for support in the CAO's office. We also recognize that there were some short-term things that MGO could help us with, including this and the staffing study and other things. So I'm still on board with all of those items. I think they're all incredibly important. I appreciate all the hard work of everybody to try and bring this together. And I'm looking forward to seeing this thing work and where we need to go back and tweak things, modify, make it work better. I'm sure we can do that. So yeah, I'm on board and I think this is a great, great day bringing these resources to the table.
Thank you Supervisor Madron. And if it's all right with everyone, I will move on to public comment. At this moment, we have one hand up. And last four digits of six, five, five, six. And if that's you, welcome. Press star six and mute. Hi, if you've got the last four of six, five, five, six, press star six.
Can you hear me?
Now they can hear you. We will hear you. Thank you.
Okay.
And you have three minutes.
My concern is that the last thing I knew, you guys were doing a study to see what was required to make everything work better. Now, watching this, I see, oh, this was like a collaboration with the CFO, with Linda Lee and that MGO to like figure out a way to overwhelm the auditor controller and, and not overwhelm, but take over because this person's going to be paid way more than her. I mean, I don't, I don't see how this is cool. I mean, and she still doesn't have, people are leaving her staff, you know, that's really hard and people leave and she hasn't even been given a chance. And it seems like you're just doing your very, very, very best to make her quit. I mean, I realize that you guys hate her or something, but... And also, is Linda Lee applying for this job? I thought she was in HR. I just, is this just, it's gross. It's really ugly. And I'm sorry that you guys are this way. I wish you could have really helped her. Karen Paz Dominguez succeed, but that's not the plan. I don't think, okay, that's it.
All right, thank you. All right, we will, there's no other hands up. We'll return to the board. And I did want to, you know, I'm going to make a couple of clarifications. And, you know, Linda, you probably should make more, most of them because there is a lot of, I think, inaccuracies. I really appreciated that you and the auditor have worked. And it's, we do, like Supervisor Madron said, you know, this is about working together and trying to make everyone be more, able to be more efficient and successful. But, you know, and Linda Lee used to be a CFO, I believe, in her previous life. I don't think she has any interest in it here. I think that was brought up and I just, Linda, can you clarify things that you perhaps heard as well as I did that are in error? We might have the wrong impression out there.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Honorable board members, I wish to make a clarification. When I was appointed as your human resources director and overseeing HR and risk management in the last nine months, I came to this county with an openness to do great things, to engage the workforce. And what made me come to this county was your strategic plan, your framework. There was a strong desire to be a high-performance organizations. And I thrive very best to do public service with the highest integrity and professionalism. I am so encouraged by the directions of your board. And we have had many conversations in public settings trying to understand what is the right path forward. And through your leadership since last fall, I am encouraged to see all of this for operational organizational studies that I get to work and to bring forth to your board. To date, we have accomplished an interim measure to really provide stability in a short term for the auditor controllers. And I'm so proud of that for Ms. Paz Dominguez to be able to get some staffing, to get some needs. And my office continues to have that collaborations on a daily basis where we can because we cannot do our job correctly if we do not collaborate and try to learn from one another. And I am so proud of that working relationship. Number two, with this study today, it's number two, is adding value to the organizations. It will continue to enhance the organizations and moving these organizations in the directions. And to poll the entire county, the entire state of California, and have a 51% response rate that there is a CFO exists in the organization, to me, this solidified why this county, with your approval and your leadership this afternoon, is creating that path forward for the health of this county. Number three, I am so proud of the current auditor controller staffing study in progress. We are making tremendous progress and I cannot wait to review the data, the analysis, and the recommendations and to have that discussions with the auditor controller to bring forth. So I'm excited for that study. And what's left on my organizational study is the big, big reorganizational, functional realignment. We talked about this last fall. There are so many business processes, redundancies, and we have pockets out there. There's an opportunity for us to look back. How do we streamline some of this and move steps so that we can move forward in an efficient and an effective manner? And that study itself will require multi-year approach. And I can't wait to return to your board in the coming months with an action plan of how we can move forward. All of these are value-added. And I have dedicated my personal career in public service in 25 years. And not a lot of people know about my history. And I am proud to say that I am a refugee. I came to this country when I was six years old. But I believe in this country. I believe in the public service. I believe in the fabric of the community. I've dedicated my career 25 years to learn the best I can, to provide and to pay forward. Just because I have a finance background, that doesn't mean I have an interest at this stage in my career to talk about numbers. But I do know that I'm value-added to these organizations and I will continue to do my job directed by your board to add value to the organization. And just to summarize, I stand by this study. And I have data, and I'm very proud of this work. And I appreciate your comments this afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Well, thank you, Director Lee. And I just, I appreciate you very much. And I think part of the confusion is people think of a CFO and somehow they get the vision of that as the person who's in charge of everything. And, you know, auditors are actually, if I recall, when I looked up, they're more, they're actually referred to chief accounting officers. So they're different, but I think some people are having a difficult time with that distinction because I know I had to really look at it too. Any Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the chair. Director Lee, I just wanted to thank you for the analysis and for Scott for the presentation. And I want to also recognize that sometimes information gets out that is not correct and you should no way have to defend yourself. And I want to apologize for that. I know we're not supposed to respond to public comment, but I just know that you, your intentions are good and what you've presented to us is for the better of our county and to help things work and run smoother. And I just want to say I really appreciate everything that you do as our HR director and this presentation and what you try to collaborate to bring our agencies together.
Thank you Supervisor Bushnell. I had just wanted to give Linda the opportunity to clear up some of what I knew were misperceptions that I generally agree with you. Supervisor Bone?
Can I make a motion to receive and file staff report and approve two through six on the recommendations?
Sure, we have a motion, but I need a second now.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. I don't see what looks to be any other conversation. So Brian, we do a roll call vote?
Yes, Chair. Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Thank you. Passes four oh.
All right. Well, I believe, and thank you both, all three of you for bringing that to us. And so with that, I do believe, I do believe we have no more work on our plate. So at this point then, I guess all there's left to do is adjourn for the day, for the week. See you next time.